So Steve, we can start recording.
Okay, great. We are recording now.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for being here. I, as you, this is going to be the start of the first meetings post, well, since the pandemic started of the REO. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate your being here. I've asked ahead of the meeting and for Hope and Che, I want to thank them for their work and Theo as well. I've asked that the reports, since we haven't had a meeting since pandemic started late last year, early last year, for all the most current reports to be sent out electronically. I believe they came out this morning. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review them. But if you have, and you have any questions, but I think at some point we'll, we'll take those questions. If there's no objections, I'd like to start with having Hope or Che give us an update from their perspective of where we stand right at this present moment. I see. Lisa has asked Hope if these could be attached to it as part of the chat. I don't know if you have the capability to do that or if it's too volumous or whatever, but is that an option? Hope? Che?
Oh, can you hear us?
Hang on, I'm working on it.
Oh, okay.
Try again?
Just two.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, yes, that can be an option.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that.
Hope, you're ready? Or Che, which one of you would like to speak, Rob? Or should I?
Hope can start with the numbers.
So can you start with just giving us a general overview and then just kind of delve into the numbers a little bit, please?
Okay, well, your, your biggest project is obviously the Brightwood Lincoln School Project. And that's been going on for about a year now. There were some other projects that I checked my notes from our last meeting, which I think was about a year ago. There were questions about the big Y project. So I included those numbers. That concluded in May, or May, that concluded in May. I also gave you the final numbers on the East Forest Park Library Project because we didn't have those final numbers when we last met. And I also gave you a relatively small project that just concluded last month, and that was the spring, excuse me, the SciTech Boiler-Chiller Replacement Project. So if you take a look at the Brightwood Elementary School Project, their numbers are pretty solid. They're a little short on residences. They're at just under thirty percent versus thirty-five, but all the other percentages they're meeting or exceeding. I don't remember, Che, when was the last time you went out there?
So Brightwood Lincoln had shut down a few weeks ago, so probably a month ago because of COVID. So the non-essential workers weren't allowed back onsite. They shut the trailers down. So O'Connell and Sons is going to let us know when we can go back onsite, but as of right now, it's just the sub, the school working. The GC and the compliance aren't allowed onsite for the past month so far. So about since I've been onsite actually, and then the last numbers for December just came in.
Yeah, those are reflected on this, on this spreadsheet that went around this morning.
Correct.
So we also, the city also has a number of projects that are going on in park projects. Probably about a half a dozen or so, but those don't fall under the REO. But they're going on as well. We're waiting for the DeBerry School Project to get going, although I think that's some months away from, from actually starting, but that's the next major.
We were, yes, that is going out to bid in February, and I think it should be opening in March. And probably starting if all goes to plan in April or May. And that'll be like a Brightwood-type project. It's going to be a big school, so it's going to be a lot of, a lot of good numbers.
The, the, the meetings for Brightwood Lincoln are going on with the subs with myself, Hope, and Frank Amaro, Ethan Amaro from O'Connell and Sons on a weekly basis for the projects, even though we can't be onsite right now.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? I can't raise my hand still.
Sure, this isn't informal. Go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, thank you. So Che, when you talk about the meetings, are you talking about meetings with subcontractors?
I'm, I'm talking about meetings that I have with O'Connell and Sons, the general contractors, HR, who is their compliance, and when we have any issues with the subcontractors not meeting their numbers or falling short, or before the subcontractors come onsite to know what is expected of them, we have those meetings when they're necessary. So a monthly report goes out to every subcontractor to say where they're at, where they need to shore up their numbers up, and where they're performing. And if there's any continuance with them not meeting their numbers, then we schedule meetings with subcontractors.
Okay, now, if there's like, say the DeBerry Project, who's the general contractor on that?
Who's the GC on? I, I don't know.
It hasn't, I don't think it's been bid yet.
Oh, it hasn't been bid yet?
I, I think it's just the design portion of it, but not the construction.
Okay, so when it is bid and they're ready to subcontract, do they hold meetings with the community and subcontractors before they do their RFP process to get subcontractors on board?
I think that's a question better for Theo for our end, because obviously there are going to be a significant number of filed sub bids on that project.
We have, just, just for compliance, we have meetings with the subcontractors before they come onsite. As far as the community meeting with the general contractor, I am not aware, no.
You still there?
Theo, do you know how that happens and how?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, so that's a little bit different than our normal construction project. Because this is a construction manager at risk project due to the amounts. So you have a more robust subbid process that takes place. So it's not really the contractor is going to be picking from the community and kind of submitting their big bid. It's, we're going to have multiple rounds of sub bidders and prequalifications. There's a prequal, and then those folks get invited to submit a bid for all of the sub trades. So that is advertised pretty heavily. I don't know if that answered your question.
Is it, it, it does. Is it advertised Mass Live, like Republican? Where is it advertised?
Yep, so with all of our bids, we do COMBIES, which is the state's purchasing platform. We do the local paper, and that's also duplicated on Mass Live. We do the city's website. We put it on the bulletin board. Obviously, it doesn't work anymore, and it's published in the Massachusetts Central Register, which is something that all the contractors subscribe to, and they get automatically alerted that it's coming out to bid.
When that publication goes out, can they be sent to the council? So we could let the community know, because a lot of times we're getting complaints that subcontractors aren't aware of these meetings. And so if we have a list of them, we would be able to provide it and not get the backlash on the backend.
I would love to do that. Just, who would you like it to go to?
Can they go to Susan and Kelly, and then it'll just be circulated to all of us?
Pretty much every time I put a bid in for a construction project, you wanted to go to Susan. I think that's a great idea, but I can do, alright.
Because we, we always get, oh, we didn't know about it, things like that. And so if we're able to promote it as well, or at least know the information and can say, well, this is where it was advertised, then that will help us out a lot.
I will do that, Counselor.
Thank you, Theo. Thank you, Che and Hope.
Tim, I see your hands.
Yeah, I would just wonder if we could just have a, you know, without worrying about the numbers and stuff yet, just an update. It's been ten months since we've really met. So, you know, project by project, just like the big one, the Lincoln, Brightwood, Wrightwood Lincoln. Is that, you know, you said it was put on hold because of COVID or whatever.
No, so the, the, sorry, sorry, Tim, the, the project's not on hold. The subcontractors are in the building. The building's enclosed. But there's not as many subs at one time in the building, and the GC's not onsite, and the compliance can't be onsite in the trailers right now, but the project is not on hold. The project is still going forward.
So what allows certain subcontractors to continue to work and others to not, and you guys not?
They're not, they, they have to be spaced out in the building. So they're in separate parts of the school, still working on their ends of the projects, but all of them can't be in the building at once right now.
Okay. Now, what is the general timeframe for that, completion of that? Then another year?
Yes, at least.
Okay. And then the other big project, if we just go by size of project, the other big project is the, is the replacement for DeBerry and Homer. And that is just going out to bid. Is that what you said, Theo?
Correct. They actually just asked me for the dates last week. I want to say it's mid to late February. It's going out to bid. So add four weeks to that on the backend for it to open up. Yeah, so we should be able to have a baseline of who's going to be on that job, probably March.
Will it likely be some of the same people that have run Brightwood Lincoln?
Oh, that's a good question, you know, I'm, you know, I hate to say COVID is affecting it, but it is, you know, I, I don't know. We've had some people say they, they are really busy. We've had a lot of contractors call me anecdotally and say, you know, a lot of private construction is shut down, but we're government, so we're kind of the only game in town. So a lot of these smaller projects that we've been bidding, especially over, we haven't met in a year, but especially over the summer, the smaller projects, we got probably three, four as many times bidders that we normally get, because we're the only ones that still had continuity of these operations. So it's, I can't really give you a great answer on that.
That's all right. It's a good answer. And so let's just, so if those are the, on size of project, what's the next projects and their relative status?
I have three boilers that just went out, and I think I'd have to check my numbers, but I think at least two of them, if not all three, were our REO projects. I don't know if Hope or Che, you know that off the top of your head?
Um, I don't. I actually spoke to Pete Garvey yesterday, and he mentioned that, because I was talking to him about Adams Plumbing and Heating, which was the, the general contractor on the SciTech boiler. And I think he said that Adams had two, had two more projects coming up, so I'm assuming those are also boiler replacement projects.
Okay.
I don't, the third, I don't, I know, I know he said two, but I don't know about the third.
Okay. And what are, are there other active projects? I'm just trying to get my mind back on.
There's a few smaller ones, like Symphony Hall. Some smaller roof or window projects, but most of what's been active, although perhaps not right this month, were basically park projects, the horizontal construction, Walsh Park, Kennefick Park. What am I forgetting, Che? Walsh, Kennefick.
Walsh, Kennefick, Westminster, couple more.
Yeah, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't fall under the REO.
Okay.
Calhoun, Calhoun Park, yeah.
Yeah.
But there's probably about six or seven parks that are going out right now.
And the reason they wouldn't be on the REO is because of the size of the project.
It's horizontal construction.
Yeah, they're not, they're not buildings. They're basically, you know, redoing asphalt and that's.
Prefab structures.
Gotcha, okay. How about, I know this isn't probably got a lot of city involvement, but I'm, I'm not quite sure what the Lake Massasoit, the dam and stuff, is that? Do you guys have anything to do with that?
At CDBGDR, that's disaster recovery and national disaster resilience. That's not, that's not us, as of this point right now, yeah.
Okay.
Gonna be, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah.
We, we bought the dam parts, so it's, this is, there's like three factories in the country that build these pieces. And there was a bid probably this time last year for someone to come out and kind of see what we had going on, and they, they won the bid, and they are constructing those pieces now, and they're going to bring them down, and eventually there will be a bid for the installation of those new hydroelectric, not hydroelectric, excuse me, the dam parts, I guess. That's coming. I don't know off the top of my head when it's coming, or what COVID did to that production schedule.
Go ahead. Excuse me, just real quick. Hope, are you able to attach those, those documents to the chat?
Would have to be the administrator. We, we'll get them to Focus Springfield before the meeting, and the administrator can do it. The meeting host.
Okay, actually, I think I have.
Everybody should have gotten it. I, I emailed it to.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at now while you're talking. I'm looking to see if I can find the email where it is, and then I can just forward it to Lisa and to Charlie if they desire to see it. And I'm just got a lot of, a lot of emails. Okay, here it go. Okay, I don't think I have your information, Charlie, in my phone, but I will, I will eventually. I won't take it right now, but Lisa, would you be so kind as to forward it to Charlie, and then eventually we'll get him in the loop as well? Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I think I got everything. I was able to transfer it over. Tim, did you, would you like to continue?
Yeah, just, just one or two other questions. So, so what I picked up in the process, while you guys have continued working, and we haven't been meeting as a, as a committee, it sounds like you, a couple of things, I would just, what would help me is just a, you know, lay of the land with how this work is going. And one of the things you said is a lot of private construction is not happening, which gives more people, more availability for people to apply for our projects. And I just didn't know if that, if that has resulted in better numbers in our different categories that we look at, or, you know, without looking at all the detail right now, it's too much of a deep dive for me until I get, until I just get the lay of the land kind of thing. Is it, is it a better situation where we're, we're doing?
Well, I think, I, I think if you're referring to what Theo said, I think he was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Theo, was, was basically saying that they were having, or because private work had kind of dried up a little bit, that since the city was still going forward with, you know, projects, that they were getting more bids at the, at the initial stage. I don't, I, I think that it's certainly on the Brightwood Lincoln Project, which is the biggest one we've got going right now. Their numbers, in my opinion, are very good. Like I said, they're, they're a little short on the residence, but all other numbers, they're, they're beating, they're beating the numbers. And Che, I don't know if you want to speak on, superficial is not the right word. I mean, I, I don't think you have to go into any depth, but maybe Tim and Melvin and the other committee members can appreciate, there was, there was a specific sub on the Brightwood Lincoln Project that compliance was having an issue with, and maybe you can speak to the way the general contractor on that project, specifically Frank, worked with compliance to deal with that subcontractor.
So, yes, we had a, a couple of subs, one that was just really out of compliance and just flouting it. And O'Connell and Sons, as a general contractor, has been great in working with compliance in subs. And Frank, who Hope previously referenced, Frank Amaro, who is O'Connell and Sons Compliance Officer, we had to call the sub. We, Hope, myself and Frank constructed a letter outside of our uniform letter to send to the subcontractor. Got in touch with the boss, talked to the project manager a couple of times, finally got them in compliance, and everything ended up working out. But the other, to piggyback off of that, we send out monthly letters, even if they're a little bit out of compliance, and we want a corrective action plan, best practices form, to see how they're going to come back into the compliance. We want to plan and how we can help out. So Frank has been great as far as communication with the subs, with us. We've been working together as far as everything is concerned with compliance and keeping the project in compliance. As Hope previously stated, all the, all the numbers on the project are, they're hitting all the numbers or exceeding all the numbers. We're probably a few percentage points below on residency, but outside of that, it's been a great working relationship, and their compliance team has been doing a great job as far as working with us and keeping tabs on the project.
That's great. I remember meeting him and being impressed with him right from the start. It's, that's great that, that, that he's, he's as, as respectful of what we're trying to do and follows up on it. That's great. Is there an issue with residents in general? Is that something that, where we're falling short in different projects?
Well, again, like Steel said, hate to keep saying COVID, but COVID definitely plays a role. There's been turnover at the project. And with the last letters that went out, we've received responses from a few subs that said they're actually having more residents come on to the project for the month of January. So when we get January's monthly report, I imagine that the number, I think we're at thirty percent, somewhere around there. That number should increase for January's numbers.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody, Lindsay, do you have anything you wanted to ask or add?
I don't. Thanks so much for the update, everybody.
Okay, I, Tracy, I see your hands up. You have another question?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm glad my hand feature is working. My question is, the DeBerry Park, is that a REO project?
No, no, that's horizontal construction as well.
Okay.
Just, just as, just for information, Tracy is just kind of new to the REO and, or at least getting, and I appreciate her being here. Che, if you wouldn't mind, could you just explain that, you know, what horizontal construction is? And one of the problems I've have, or seem to have to deal with quite often, is people in general who are not followers of the REO don't understand or seem to know what the REO has oversight over. It came up last week with, I believe, one of her, somebody was complaining about the Knox Building, and some construction and garden policy versus work ethics at that site. And of course, the REO is a private project, just because he may apply for some tax credits or some public money doesn't automatically make, so either Che, Hope, or even Theo, whoever would feel most comfortable, could you just give Tracy an idea of what horizontal construction is and what REO does and does not carry? Probably Theo would be the best person to do that, with no disrespect to anyone else. Theo, please?
Sir, vertical construction is stuff that is governed by, it's called Chapter 149 in the Mass General Laws. And it's basically anything that meets the definition of a building, you know, four walls, windows, and a door, and then the interior components of that building. There's an exception to pump houses, but we don't really have to worry about that. That's a water sewer problem. Thirty Thirty Nine M is what's called horizontal construction, and those are things like roads with Chris Signoli, bridges, and parks with Pat Sullivan. So those things are not under the REO, simply because of the pure fact that the trade classifications aren't really as robust as they would be with, unusually with 149 construction.
Thank you, Theo. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just add, if it's, if it's helpful to Counselor Whitfield, that, just piggybacking onto what Theo said about the, the robust nature of the classifications, is when you're dealing with horizontal construction, you're probably only dealing with handful or so of labor classifications, you know, backhoe operator, a roller, you know, truck driver, that kind of thing, versus vertical construction, where you've got your carpenters, your electricians, your masons, you know, terrazzo, what have you. So if, it just, when the REO was amended in, in February of 2019, I believe, the horizontal construction was taken out of the purview of the REO because so much of it was just focused on like paving and, and installing parks that didn't really employ numerous kinds of labor classifications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and everybody for the explanation, because I was totally confused.
I, I anticipate at some point in the future, we may end up hosting, and we will be having a meeting and to talk about some other roles of maybe the, of, of REO expanding in terms of its scope, but this is where we operate now. And unfortunately, not enough people have been paying or are aware of what we are. So we get a lot of questions, a lot of comments, and there's a lot of misinformation about exactly what we have oversight of. And I hope to do in the future to do a better job of communicating that information. Tim, you had another question?
I don't think so. I think that might just still be up there. I'm all set at the moment, Melvin. Thank you.
Okay, is there, I'm seeing, I assume nobody else has anything else. Does anybody else have anything to say before I open it up to, to Lindsay, I mean to Lisa or Charlie for public comment? Lisa, Charlie?
Hi, thank you, Chair. So Lisa, boss of the carpenters union. I guess I just asked that if you could still do the email out of the report, that would be helpful, Che and Hope to us and Counselor Whitfield, because it didn't go, it didn't come with that attachment. And then I, I guess the other last thing I would have to add would just be that I think it would be really useful if there was a consistent meeting. I know it has to be Zoom now, and the transition to Zoom has been a challenge, but it would be great if there were kind of a monthly meeting going forward so that we could all be regularly updated and hear from the general contractors on how these projects are going. Zoom makes it even easier, less of a time commitment for people to actually have to get to a meeting or anything like that. So the GC could easily call in for a portion of it. So it's my suggestion.
Actually, one of the agenda items was supposed to be figuring out a schedule. Hopefully, we would have more committee members, or obviously Theo, Charlie, I mean, Hope and Che. But as far as Quorum, we only have the three of us, Tim, myself, and Lindsay. Fiore is not on, nor is Pat Sullivan. I'm hopeful, I assume that we can set the schedule for, I'm hopeful that we can come back in, say, one month. Is that sound okay to you, either Lindsay or Tim? And then hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have more of a representation of the actual members of the committee so that we can establish and decide whether or not we want to go on. Is a month out too long of a time, considering we are in COVID? Or would, would you guys like to do it? Tim or Lindsay, would you like to chime in? Or even Che, Hope, Theo, you guys are regular members as well. I mean, in terms of attendance, your thoughts?
I'm here for you. Whenever you guys want to meet, I'll be there to support you.
Thank you, Theo. I, I like that team. I appreciate that.
Melvin? Yes, I'm not going to be available for.
Melvin, yes, I'm not going to be available for a couple of weeks. And then I'm probably going to have to quarantine too until I get, I'm going on vacation, so you'll need to keep that in mind. Unless you have Susan or Kelly do the meeting, I don't know. I don't want to burden them either. I know their hands are full.
Well, I believe the meetings are, uh, one of the advantages of this is that the meetings are recorded, uh, to Focus Springfield. If I'm not speaking out of turn, I might make it easier for people to be able to access the information, but Hope?
Um, I'm just looking back at my notes from, um. Our last REO and there was, and I don't know, I, I understand that the makeup of committees changed slightly. Um, but there was, uh. There was a, I've got a note of that the next meeting would be the third Thursday of each month. I don't know if that's still.
Okay.
In the works or, I mean, I don't care. I'm just saying that that's what I have in my notes, that it seemed like that was something that was agreed on. Um, or at least discussed at the last meeting and, um. I'm just throwing that out there.
Hope that sounds fine. Trust me, I don't remember last week and for me to remember what we talked about nine months ago. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm, I just, I, I have to own that. I wouldn't remember that. Um, so. Tim or Lindsay, do you guys have any objection to us coming back, say, third week of February at two o'clock?
Um.
Tim?
I, I think Hope said, uh, pardon me, I think Hope said, um, Thursday?
That's what I have in my notes is the third Thursday of each month, but again, th- this was back in February.
Yeah, um, I, I'm not sure why I prefer Tuesday, but it's always been Tuesday, so if. Um, I've kind of programmed a Tuesday for that. I'm, could still be available on Thursday.
That's, that's fine. I, I, like I said, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just bringing the attention to the notes that I had made, so.
Yeah, that's great.
Why we were switching from Tuesday to Thursday.
Tuesday works for me and, and actually I have a lot more flexibility than a lot of people. Um, Charlie, you wanted to say jump in there for us and offer some comment?
Um, I can wait till, uh, if you're still working out the schedule, but I, I just, I do have a comment about the covid.
Okay, just let me, let me get this done and then I'll come back to you. Uh, Lindsay, Tuesday works for you and we'll assume that Fiore and Pat comes when he can. I understand Pat has a full, uh, plate, so let's.
I'll be here.
Okay, and tentatively for at least, uh, moving forward, we'll plan on, um, you know, I've got the yearly calendar for the city councils. Already in for the whole year, so let's plan on, unless, uh, we have to hold meetings other, uh, for any other reason or what have you. I'll certainly have the discretion to be able to do that, but let's all plan on third Tuesdays every month, uh, two o'clock. And then everybody should, uh, you know, you can adjust your schedules. Obviously, we appreciate when you can be here and. Nobody needs to apologize when they're busy, uh, and can't be here. We just would appreciate and courtesy of knowing as soon as possible. Um, that sounds good to everyone?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
I, I think monthly is fine. There were times when we were meeting more frequently than that, but I think at this point, monthly is fine.
Yeah, I think when we were meeting weekly, we were, we were working out hash and dealing with a whole lot of things. I think there's going to be a lot more work that I'd like to be seeing done, um, that probably won't. Doesn't necessarily have to be done by Hope or Che. I appreciate everything that they've done at Theo as well, um, and so I, um. I just think that, uh, because of the conversations I've had over the last, since we've met, you know, uh, about private construction. Uh, I have to spend more time trying to teach people, explain what we do. There's been a lot of talk about the TIPS. And whether or not the REO should have tips, should be a part of it, um, and those are broader conversation, not for the REO to solve. But maybe be prepared to take back to the committee of the whole for the council and the administration to work through. Um, so, I, we have, uh. Charlie, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say that this year, especially, um, we're talking about, um, Lincoln Brightwood School. Um, covid, uh, the protocol that the governor put in place really affected, uh. They really hurt a lot of people that were trying to help with the REO, um, the most. Um, the residents, people that had, uh, no daycare, um, and through it all, you know, um. Um, people had to leave work, uh, there's people that are still out of work that haven't come back. Um, but in, through this, I've been getting calls from people that know the REO is out there. And, uh, the Finnish crews have started down there. They've called and asked me for city residents, minorities to come and fill those slots as they need them. And, um, the fact that they know it's there, it's, it's creating opportunity. I just want to point that out. Um, I know this has been a slow year and it's been an anomaly, but it's created jobs for people that might not have been working. And, and that's so important to the city.
Charlie, thank you. That's, that's music to all of our ears, uh, Hope, Che, Theo, Lisa, Lindsay, we've all, Tim. Uh, we've been working on this for so long and to have somebody, uh, you know, give us that type of positive comment, it certainly makes me feel good about it. And I really appreciate all the work and support of the union and your union in particular, but all of them and.
Thank you, Charlie.
General, um, we have, um, we have somebody who's listening in on by phone. Their name is not attached. Um, would you like to identify yourself, uh, number, uh, phone number ending in eleven oh nine?
Sure, it's Peter Garvey. How are you?
Okay, Peter, how are you?
But it took a little while. It ended, I was in the waiting room, which I didn't mind.
Peter, is anything that you, uh, your team would like to share with us or, or your thoughts, comments or observations, complaints?
No, I heard Charlie's comments and it's, that's a reflective on where we are right now. It's, it's been a struggle to, uh, to. Well, we, we've done a good job of keeping everything, everybody going and everyone safe. We've had a couple positive cases down at, uh. At, uh, Brightwood, we were able to isolate them, so there was no widespread, uh. Covid cases down there. There's probably a handful and there's probably anywhere between ninety and a hundred and twenty folks working down there. So there is quite a bit of activity down there. Uh, there was some question about bidding coming up, uh, we are doing qualifications. For the file, file sub bids. File sub bids are the seventeen, um, trades. That are regulated through the state of Massachusetts as far as how the bidding goes, so. Uh, I can share all that. I think if Tracy's still on, she kind of had some questions about bidding and who, who's. Everyone's invited. We're actually looking for bidders. We need bidders, uh. To cover a lot of different trades. Uh, Charlie's working on the carpentry, so that's always helpful to get more. Uh, carpentry trades bidding, so we need more than three or four bids. We, we'd like to see, you know, anywhere from six to seven bids on trade bidders, uh. Trade bidders, we have plenty of electricians, seems like there's plenty of electrical contractors out there. We usually get six or seven bids for electrical, uh. Mechanical, we usually get four or five bidders. It's the, you know, some of the other trades that are. I just can't emphasize enough, you can make a good living at being a tradesman, a really good living. But you can also make eleven hundred and fifty dollars staying home if you're unemployed. So that's a problem for us too. We've been trying to get people to come back to work and. There's not a lot of interest in coming back if you're making less working if you are unemployed.
Well, um, that's, uh, conversation for probably another day and on a much broader conversation nationally. On that, I'm sure.
That's some, somebody with a lot bigger shoulders than me.
And, uh, I, I appreciate everything you've done and your team as well. Um, it sounds like everybody's done a yeoman's job considering everything that we've dealt with. I, and, uh, if that being said, Tracy has left the meeting, um, but I. If you could, Peter, anything that you think like that would be appropriate, if you send it to me, I'll make sure it gets shared. And, uh, if there's no other questions, comments or observations, um, those of you who are in attendance. Uh, I look, I would respectfully ask that, uh, we take a motion to adjourn.
If, uh, one more, we're going to be opening Brightwood Lincoln. The ser- tamping of occupancy is due to us, uh, the end of June. So we'll be moving furniture in over the summer and it'll be occupying that school, God willing, in September.
Thank you.
Wow. That's amazing. That's great, great job.
We can't say how, I really, uh, I know the city really had to work hard to, to get, keep going track on that job. It was, you know, it was, it was a, not an easy task.
Well, it's, it's amazing in a way with the big blip on our, in our meetings, you know. That's a ten-month update that Pete just gave us, you know, the, uh, there's, that, I'm sure the date was the same. Maybe at the time we stopped meeting last March, but without having to get, getting regular updates on it, that's cool that it's that close to being complete. That's great. Um, I just want to say before we sign off that, you know, good job all the way around to Hope, to Che, to. Uh, to Theo, to Pete, just on keeping things going and keeping things, the numbers look pretty good. Uh, and, um, just keeping the eye on the ball. It's really, uh, it's encouraging to know that you guys are still doing. The same job you were doing with the same amount of attention and care. That's great. Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end the meeting with, final thing I want to just say is that, uh, to all of you, if there's something that you think that I need to know. Or that I can help make your job easier by the information you share, please don't hesitate. And, um, so thank you, everybody. And I want to send out a hearty thank you to Focus Springfield and his, and the team there. Uh, we couldn't do this without you and, um, they are not only trying to manage REO. But there's thirteen counselors with probably as that, or at least that many committee chairmanships. Plus all the other school department and other businesses out there of the city, and so we really appreciate them. We, they are going, they have become the heartbeat of what we do as a government, and so we want to thank them as well. All right, everybody stay safe, stay healthy and prosper. Take care.
Thank you.